You're so lucky. I mean, it's a bad accident. I mean, you're lucky that you're as small as you are.
Did you get a permit for that?
I don't know.
Wow, that just makes me chill to think about that happen. We're gonna have to tone it down. No more speeding. Live and learn. No, no, no. Human error.
All right, everyone, we'll get started with the regular session, the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board meeting. Roll call, please.
Chairman Schlum.
Here.
Vice Chair Cantino.
Here.
Board Member LaGee.
Here.
Board Member Brown is absent. Board Member Hanson.
Here.
Board Member Elke.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Great, thank you. Any speaker cards tonight?
No, sir.
Eagle Mountain. Eagle Mountain speaker card?
Oh, it's not me.
Good. Nothing for Eagle Mountain?
No, sir.
Thank you. First item is consideration of approving Eagle Mountain Community Facility District Board meeting minutes. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you. In a second.
Sir.
Any discussion? Any speaker cards?
No, sir.
All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chairman seven zero.
Thanks. Item two, consideration resolution, EMCFD 2011-03, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the district sufficient to raise the amounts estimated to be required in the annual budget specifically for the purpose of paying principal and interest upon bonded indebtedness, all for fiscal year ending June 30, 2012. Julie, anything on this item?
Mayor, members of the board, this resolution will authorize the county to levy the tax of $1.50 per hundred of assessed valuation on the Eagle Mountain property to pay the annual debt service for those bonds.
Thank you. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right, we get a motion to approve EMCFD 2011-03. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chairman seven zero.
All right, move to adjourn this meeting. Get a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, now, we'll open up the regular session, the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board meeting. Call the meeting to order. We don't need to do roll call, we're still here, right? Bev, we're all right with that? Anyone from the public on Cottonwood?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Look for consideration of approving the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board meeting minutes of June 16, 2011.
So moved.
Second. Anyone from the public?
No, sir.
Speakers in these? Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chair six zero.
Thanks. Item two, consideration resolution, CMD 2011-03, assessing upon individual lots within the district a certain sum sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget to provide funds for maintenance of certain pedestrian areas, parkways, parking, and all for the fiscal year ending July, ending the 30th day of June, 2012. Julie?
Thank you, Chairman Schlum, members of the board, this resolution will authorize Maricopa County to levy $50.15 on each property owner in the Cottonwoods subdivision for the annual maintenance on their property.
Good, thank you very much. Any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
All right, we have a motion to approve CMD 2011-03.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chairman six zero.
Thank you. Look for a motion to adjourn the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board. So moved. In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Three-minute break, and we'll get on with the regular council meeting. All right, we'll call the regular council meeting to order. Please rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation, Mr. Widom from Temple Beth Havagot. Welcome, Fred, how are you?
There are so many biblical texts which speak to our hearts, commanding that we treat all of God's children with the dignity and respect we all deserve as being created in the image of God. Thirty-six times the Torah joins us to have one law for the native and the stranger. "You shall not insult the deaf," we read in Leviticus, "or place a stumbling block before the blind. You shall not render an unfair decision; do not favor the poor, or show deference to the rich. You shall rise before the aged and show deference to the old. Love your neighbor as yourself, I am the Lord." We are taught to uphold the cause of the fatherless and the widow. "You shall not abuse the needy and destitute laborer." Caring for each other is fundamental to the biblical perspective. The prophets continue this theme. Amos stresses the equality of all of God's children, as we read. "To me, O Israelites, you are just like the Ethiopians. True, I brought Israel up from the land of Egypt, but also the Philistines from Caftor and the Aramaans from Kirah. All the people walk," Micah notes, "in the names of its gods. Despite our differences, Malachi asks, 'Have we not all one parent? Did not one God create us? Why do we break faith with one another, profaning the covenant of our ancestors? Why indeed? May the leaders on this council be blessed with the divine spirit of caring, which will enable them to make the right decisions for all the citizens in our community. Amen."
Amen. Thank you very much for sharing that with us. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlum.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Brown is absent. Councilmember LaGee.
All right. First item on the agenda is reading of the proclamation, and we're wearing, thank you, our fire marshal for bringing us some purple pins to signify drowning impact awareness month, of which we've recognized for many years now, and it's critically important, particularly in the summertime, to watch your children and your friends' children whenever you're enjoying the outdoors with one another and there's a pool around. Proclamation reads, "Whereas drowning impact awareness month will raise awareness that the number and impact of child drownings in Arizona affects everyone, and whereas the drowning incidents in Arizona take the lives of the equivalent of a classroom of children each year, and whereas a child drowning can happen to any family regardless of education, race, or socioeconomic background, and whereas families can take simple steps to protect their children around water to avoid the tragedy of the unnecessary loss of life, and whereas water safety remains a priority for Arizona families, communities, and government, and whereas keeping children healthy and safe is the goal of hospitals, fire departments, and other prevention institutions in Arizona, and raising awareness will increase understanding and education of effective ways to prevent drowning. Thou therefore I J.T. Schlum, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim August 1 through 31, 2011, is drowning impact awareness month here in Fountain Hills." So, watch your children around water. Here in Arizona, it's hot, that water is very attractive, so. Another thing I want to mention here tonight is, on the 17th of August, in the Fountain Hills Unified School District's Learning Center at 6:00 PM, they'll be having a El Salvador night there to talk about the recent trip that the youth and the chaperones, the 44 youth from our high school and the many chaperones that accompanied them went down to our sister city of Ataco. Their experience is there, they're going to celebrate in the Fountain Hills Unified School District's Learning Center there at the corner of Palisades and Golden Eagle Boulevard. At 6:00 PM, everyone is invited to come and enjoy that celebration and hear what the youth experienced, what they took away, and what they left there. They did some tremendous work, so you're all invited to that event. This point, I'll ask, is there any speaker cards tonight? Not on a specific agenda item.
Yes, call of the public. Deana Galassini.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Galassini.
I came here tonight because I'm disappointed in this fire safety survey bill I had, and according to an article today in the paper, there's more down the pipe coming, a fee schedule of all these little dreamt-up bills for us business owners that I feel that is inappropriate. I've lived here for eight years, I've had a business for four, and I never received a bogus bill like this. I mean, it doesn't even have a due date. It's like, okay, let's see. Fire safety survey. I thought surveys were free. When the town had money, the town should have saved money for times like this, okay? Lot of people had money, had, you know? Lot of people are hurting. The town is hurting, we're hurting, or we know somebody who's hurting very badly right now. We pay nearly 10% in sales tax and a pretty healthy property tax, which I hear that's going to go up too, no doubt. This survey should have been paid by the town's general fund or something, you know? These should be refunds to business owners, not bills. They're closing their doors. Every time I turn around, another business is closing their door. Mayor Schlum, I thought you were all for helping, you know, promote business coming to this town. This doesn't promote business, in my eyes. I don't know about other people, but I heard you got a lot of phone calls over this bill. I was one of them. It's like, I, this should be taken care of out of the other funds that we pay. You know, and to dream up a slew of fee schedules to bleed more money out of us business owners is unacceptable to me, you know? You know, I understand, maybe, maybe these, there's residents here that have out-of-state businesses, maybe they should get a bill too, you know? So, this is like a $10,000 sting to all of us here in town. That's nice little pocket bill there, pocket income. This survey bill is nothing but a hidden tax to me. Gerald Solenti predicted, you can look him up on YouTube, he predicted tax riots in 2012, and I'm beginning to believe this is what is needed. I had the choice last week to spend $600 or $700 in this town. Guess what? Because I got this bogus bill, I spent my money in some other town. I'm going to speak every time I get one of these ridiculous bills.
Thanks, Ms. Galassini.
Thank you for listening.
Your bet. Is that it for a call to the public?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And the fee schedule, we'll be discussing more tonight. Next item is a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. The consent agenda contains the town council meeting minutes of May 25, June 2, and June 14, 2011. You get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Anyone from the public on that item?
No, sir.
No. Roll call on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Councilmember LaGee.
Aye.
Mayor Schlum.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cantino.
Aye.
Councilmember Elke.
Aye.
Mayor six zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to the regular agenda. Item two, consideration of approving the final plan for the Centennial Circle and the expenditure of remaining funds for the paver installation, which was budgeted at $75,000 to be used for irrigation and landscaping costs in the Centennial Circle. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor Schlum. Members of the council.
Our Fountain Hills light's not on. Maybe it's a cost-saving measure, I'm not sure.
You may recall that a number of months ago, Mr. Miles, who's joining us again this evening, proposed to the council a concept for a Centennial Circle in the area between the community center and the library. At that time, he was directed to work with his group and come back with a potential final plan. The council also agreed this fiscal year to set aside $75,000 for the potential to place pavers, which were anticipated for the circle as well, based on the estimates that were available at that time. Since that time, additional estimates have been received. Obviously, the amount of pavers has been reduced, and therefore, the cost. And based on that, we're anticipating that there may be as much as $19,000 or less available after the pavers are actually installed, based on the revised prices. So, the second request that he will have this evening is basically to see if the councils agreeable to using those remaining funds towards landscaping and irrigation in the circle as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Miles.
All right, great. Thank you, Mark. Welcome, Mayor Miles, how are you?
Thank you, Mayor Schlum, councilmembers. Mrs. Gede, it's a delight to see you in that position. I wish you were there permanently, but that's not the matter before us. This is, I think, the fourth time that the Centennial Circle has come before us, and this time, I think we have a plan that is very exciting. These bricks represent the color of the pavers that will go in. The light bricks represent the light and the star, and you can see the other two. As Mark said, we have tightened our belts, and we think we can bring those pavers in for something significantly less than the $75,000 that were budgeted, but the landscaping is there, and we're getting bids in the neighborhood of $40,000 for that, assuming that we come in with a bid of $56,000 for the pavers, and I think that's a realistic figure, give or take $1,000. That should leave us about $18,000, and we'd like to apply that for the landscaping. It's a legitimate question to ask, where is the balance coming from? And as you know, the Greening Committee has been very active in town, and the Greening Committee is also a part of the same organization, the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association, that is working with this. And the Greening Committee is going to take a strong hand toward designing the actual irrigation system and also toward trying to raise the money for it. Now, in addition to the pavers and the landscaping, and if you've been outside, you've seen that the eight monuments are now fully installed. We first, a few weeks ago, had the five Cs to the Arizona cotton, copper, cattle, citrus, and climate. I'm getting where I can rattle those right off. And a couple of days ago, we put in a monument that the Fort McDowell tribe had paid for. We put in a monument that was put in by the Historical Society, containing a timeline for the state of Arizona, and we finished up the one with the Centennial Seal that's being sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. So those eight monuments are in there, and they're done, but they look very much right now like some icebergs in an empty sea, so we want to fill in that sea. In addition to the pavers and the landscaping, we have allocated six additional sites for sculpture, and the next item on the agenda is a request that you approve, the first of the six that we have coming in. And I can tell you that it's not going to be too long. You give me, give us a year, and I'm pretty sure we can find donors for some really nice pieces for the others. We also have allocated in there 18 benches for people to sit in clusters of three to six benches. We expect that those will be paid for by private money. The Library Association, which already has made a major contribution toward the eight monuments, has invited me to address them on their September meeting, and I'm anticipating that they will provide some of the funds to pay for those park benches. And Mark tells me that there's a waiting list for people who would like to buy a park bench in honor of a loved one down at the park, and they're all filled up. So, I suspect that over the next year or two, we'll have those 18 park benches pretty much in and paid for. And that leaves only then a circular fence that is designed to go around, that will be a low wall with a seating wall. Frankly, the final liaison on that has not been approved. I don't expect to bring that to you for approval quite soon time, and to be quite honest, we may be coming back to you a year from now to ask for funds out of next year's budget to put that in if we deem it. But in any case, what we have is a gigantic circus rose. It is going to be pointing due north and south. The keynote piece of sculpture, Power of Thought, has been put on a permanent base. It's also very much part of this facility. And Power of Thought is pointing due south, and that's simply because the, if you point it due south, the most visible side is the side that has most of the beautiful features on it. But the compass rose will be pointing north and south based on the compass north rather than true north. We may put a little marker to make that true north. In any case, this land has been sitting vacant for, really forever, and it's been sitting vacant in that circle since the town built the community center and the library museum. We all know it's time to get on with it, and right now, we're pleased to present what I think is frankly a very good plan. And I must say that it's not a plan that I came up with, but a plan that a number of our committee members came up with, and I am very pleased with the end product that they've done. Questions, comments, anything I can answer?
Good. Thank you very much. Mayor Miles, we'll look for, first, a motion to approve. I'm not sure if we have a specific motion here.
I think we do. Sorry, mayor.
Looking at the wrong one.
If I could.
Yep.
I'd like to move that we approve the final plan for the Centennial Circle and approve the expenditure of any remaining funds from the pavers to be utilized for landscaping and irrigation.
Good, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone on this item?
Yes, Mayor, one speaker. Nancy Ordowski.
All right, thank you. Mayor Miles, we have one speaker from the public on this item.
Okay, let me step back.
Welcome, Ms. Ordowski.
Thank you. I appreciate giving me time to point out a couple of things. Although this circle has been empty for a long time, I question the validity of doing something, spending this money, and budgeting it at this particular time. You've just taxed all the business owners $25 for a fire safety survey. It tells us in the paper that we're going to be taking a property tax increase for the I think even if this money was appropriated at such a time that we had the monies in our account, then it should have been looked at again, and it should have been taken a new look and changed for a later date. It's a beautiful Centennial Circle. I have no objection to the circle itself. I have an objection to the spending of the money at this particular time when we're asking more from our citizens. We're supposed to be creating businesses in this town so that they generate income and taxes are paid to the city, but this council has continuously dealt with that issue in a negative fashion. Let's just keep sucking more out of the people that are trying to make a living in this Not only that, we have a council member who has the contract to manage this. I think it smells.
Yeah, if we could get clarification, I don't believe. I think it's a volunteer effort on the council member's point.
Mr. Mayor, the town hasn't issued any contracts related to the Centennial Circle. The only approvals have been the ones that have come before council to first budget the money and then appropriate the money, as has been done. Not everything else has been done with volunteer efforts.
Thanks for clarifying.
The town paver needs to make a correction because it is not what it said.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
I just wanted to ask Jerry, and I'm sure it will be ready by then, but since our, and Mark, you can come in on this too, but since the Centennial celebration should be February 12, so 2/12/12, which will be a Sunday here for us, which I imagine part of it will have to do with the circle.
I hope so.
Will everything be in good old shape by then?
I'm anticipating that all of the pavers will be in by mid-fall. Landscaping, the Greening Committee tells me, has to be in by November, or we're going to miss the time to put it in. So, yes, by February 14, 2012, we will have a truly beautiful circle that we can be proud of, and that frankly, I hope will bring visitors to the community and will support our business. That's been a major part behind developing the fantastic public art that we have. It has become a major draw to bring visitors into this community. We're all worried about taking care of our businesses, and I think this is just one aspect of making sure that we do that.
There is, Councilmember Hanson.
Jerry, on the estimate for the landscaping, is that pretty much cover the landscaping as depicted in the conceptual plan?
Yes, it does, and we think that we can knock that down just a little tiny bit.
Thanks.
Councilmember LaGee.
Mayor, I'd like to address Mark. Mayor, please.
Sure. Mark?
Mark, of course, we're all extremely sensitive to spending. We've had a citizen come before us and talk about the notion of spending. I think it's important that citizens that speak out in a way that was this evening with respect to increased taxation, which, by the way, Mayor, I want a clarification from our finance director, because I'm not aware of an increase in taxation. There's been nothing on the agenda, there's been no vote specifically to do that, so we'll reserve that. But with respect to municipal financing, we have something called a general fund, which is for the general operation of the town. We're being criticized for spending money. Could you please clarify what funding source is being utilized to fund this particular project?
Mayor Schlum, Councilmember LaGee, my recollection is that it's coming out of the Capital Improvement Fund, which is a separate fund from the general fund. It does not cover operations.
Okay. Now, it states here in the staff report, and I just wanted to validate that because, you know, once again, we hear interesting things at the podium here, capital fund projects. So basically, this is a dedicated fund specifically for these types of projects, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Mayor, Julie, could you clarify, please, and address the comment that was made to the public, which is broadcast on Channel 11, this notion of increases in tax, please?
Certainly, Mayor Schlum, members of the council. The town of Fountain Hills does not have a primary property tax, so we don't have a property tax that exists where there's no plans. We cannot do it without voter approval, so I'm not sure. There are other entities in town that do have a property tax, the school, the sanitary district, the county, but the town of Fountain Hills does not have a primary property tax.
Thank you for that clarification, and we will hear later regarding the fire inspection fee and how that relates to state law, and we'll address that in that particular context. I'm cease to amaze at the conspiracy theories that just continually are propagated by certain individuals. Thank you, Mayor.
The question I have, Mark, is on the timing, which is a valid concern if folks are not aware, this is, and Councilmember Dickey brought it up, this is the Centennial Circle, and our Centennial will come and go if we don't do something, but also, that circle has been there for quite some time, but it hasn't been usable because of ADA and other requirements. Will this now be a usable space for functions, weddings, gatherings for our community to utilize?
Yes, Mayor Schlum. Part of the intent, when I also met with Jerry and his group, was to try to make the facility as functional as possible. So the intent was not only to have a design that would be attractive, but also would be very functional. And I was very pleased with the design that came out, because I think it will serve not only the public, but also groups that are renting, the community center, the library, the museum, any of those would have access to it. In fact, in the design, we've actually built electrical outlets and those kinds of things to bring power into the center of that circle specifically for public functions. So, I think it will serve a variety of purposes, and as you mentioned, it is obviously very time-sensitive with the Centennial.
And I can't, just for the public, I really can't think of a project we've done over the last several years, just because we've had to reduce the budget outside of public safety 50% over the last three years, so we've been really hedging things as far as spending, even on maintenance items, which we went over considerably. So, this is really something to celebrate, but it is... So, this is really something to celebrate, but it is an investment at a very difficult time, but it does make use of a place that wasn't usable before, and also allows us to have a visible 100-year celebration of our state, which I think everybody is proud of. So, I think it's coming along great. I really appreciate the library association being involved and contributing as well as the public in fundraising through the downtown greening efforts playing a part here as well. So, I commend everybody on the collaboration. Mayor Miles for continuing to be involved in not just art, but this project as well. So, it's truly be something fun to celebrate on our Centennial of our state.
It is, again, another perfect example in my mind of a public-private partnership that works.
Any other questions on this item? Good, thank you very much. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Mark. Item number three, consideration of accepting a Don's donated bronze sculpture of an eagle titled "America" for public display in the Centennial Circle.
Mayor Schlum and members of the council, we have before you this evening a consideration of a piece, as Jerry mentioned, to go in the center of the Centennial Circle. This particular piece, which is valued at $22,000, as I said earlier, is a donated piece. The artist is a person who has also contributed to our collection previously, Native American artist Doug Hyde. And the piece, the eagle, is titled "America." As I indicated on here, the value of it is $22,000. That amount is going to be donated to the town to purchase the piece. In addition, there is an insurance cost, which would be the only cost to the town annually of $94.60. With that, I would answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, Mark. Can we get a motion on this item to accept the donated sculpture of an eagle titled "America" and place it on public display in the Centennial Circle?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Yeah, just read it. Thanks a bunch. Anyone from the public on item number three?
No, sir.
Thanks. Counsel, any discussion on this item? Councilmember Elke.
Mark, is the sculptor here tonight? Mayor Schlum, councilmember Elke, he is not. Okay. Would you certainly please pass along the gratitude of the council and the Town of Fountain Hills for this donation? Thank you.
That's a tremendous piece, too. And this, I should have mentioned this earlier, also the collaboration and partnership in that Centennial Circle are many other art pieces that have been donated by very generous people that love art, love public art in our community. A lot of folks in Fountain Hills think that the town buys all this public art, but we are graced by a lot of generous donors that contribute the art and donate it to our community. Now, well over 100 pieces, which was the goal for Centennial. If they just keep coming in, which is just tremendous, and this is a great piece for that circle, of course. Any other comments, questions on this item? Councilmember Hanson.
Do we know where in the circle it will go?
I would defer to Mr. Miles on that one.
Two points. First of all, I want to emphasize that the piece that you see up there is just a model. The actual piece will be much bigger than that, and it will be put on a base of about 42 inches high. I would emphasize also that that base will be paid for by the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association. No, it will be one of the six circles, and my current inclination is to put it fairly near the museum because it is, if we put it near the museum, it will be very near the Fort McDowell monument. And also, it will appeal, I think, to the people that are coming into the museum. So, that, the Public Art Committee hasn't decided specifically which of those six circles it will go in, but that's going to be my recommendation, that we move it as close as we can to where the museum is.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Miles. Any other questions on this item? All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Mayor Miles, don't go away. Thank you. It is, if everyone is not aware, and most probably may not be, is Mayor Miles's 75th birthday today, and I think you have some of your family here tonight.
My son is here. He came in from West Virginia where he practices medicine. Our daughter arrived just as we were walking out the door. It's a big excitement. And when people say, Jerry, you don't look 75, I looked in the mirror tonight, and I do look it, but I'm still going strong. And as I told somebody who was at Mayo Clinic yesterday for a routine checkup, and they gave me one prescription they said was good for a year, so I figured that was a good omen.
That is good. And we're so fortunate to have you and all the roles you've played, and you continue to play here in our town. We thank you very much. We have a ceremonial 75th birthday cookie and candles for you to make a wish and blow out, if you would, for us as we sing you happy birthday, council. Does that sound good? Feel free to join on Channel 11 if you're out there and on the web. I'm sure you'll sound great. Happy birthday, Mayor Miles.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mayor Miles. Happy birthday to you. And many more. Yes. And after, you can certainly take your cookie. And thanks for being a part of our meeting tonight as well, and have a great celebration with your family. Thank you. And this birthday was one of the best birthdays you could have given.
Well, thank you for giving it to us.
And as soon as Councilman Carroll gets back in town, we'll get the formal bids out, and I think you'll see some activity really quite soon on this.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks again. All right, that moves us to item number four, consideration of appointing two citizens to the Public Safety Advisory Commission for the remainder of a two-year term, beginning August 4, 2011, and ending December 31, 2012. I move to appoint Terry Cox and Frederick Horn. Can I get a second?
Second.
Counsel, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
Excellent, thank you. And I see Mr. Frederick Horn here. I almost called you Frederick Cox. I merged you two together. Mr. Horn, thank you very much for volunteering for our Public Safety Advisory Commission. And if you happen to see Mr. Terry Cox, please thank him as well as you get started on the commission. I just met today with your chair, and I'm excited that you guys have some positive momentum getting started, and I appreciate you being an addition to it. So, thank you.
Mayor, thank you for the appointment.
Thanks for serving. Item five, consideration resolution 2011-31, adopting the amended policy and procedures for civic naming of streets, businesses, or buildings, streets, buildings, structures, and recreational facilities. Andrew.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as we discussed a while back, the naming policy was brought back to you in a work session with the changes proposed. We didn't receive any comments from that time. This is in the same format it was. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone on the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right. And counsel, request a motion to accept the amended policy. Make sure that's the right wording here on our packet.
It's not there.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Read it off in here.
Oh, thanks. Anyone wish to make a motion?
All right, Mayor, hold it. I move that, sorry, I've moved to adopt resolution 2011-31, adopting the amended and restated Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, policy and procedures for civic naming of streets, buildings, structures, and recreational facilities.
Good, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion, counsel, on the policy? Councilmember Hanson.
I just had a question on B, right on the first page, the recommendation to other bodies. I just wondered what the purpose was that? The town would comment to state, federal, and/or intergovernmental boards taking actions regarding geographic names, naming, or renaming. I'm just curious.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, it's actually a carryover provision from the existing policy, but there are times when the town will be asked by, you know, Maricopa County Parks or otherwise for input on something that might be geographically nearby the town. It's infrequent, but every now and then something will come up.
Okay, so it wouldn't necessarily be in town. It would be just...
It could be something in McDowell Mountain Park or another place that's nearby that's important to the town, but not necessarily one of our landmarks.
Okay, just curious.
Thank you. And that item is kind of a cleanup item, capitalization more than anything, as far as I can tell from the previous item, the title as well. Thank you. Any other questions, comments on the policy? Councilmember Elke.
Assuming this is, this motion is going to pass, I'd like to entertain or have staff look at some options for us to honor Keith McMahon, former council member with the street. And I'd like to have that as far as discussion, or at least staff look into that for us and present us with some options.
Is that something we can take in discussion on this item, or would we bring that back to, for council discussion for action?
Mr. Mayor, the directions can certainly come as part of this. I think staff heard the request and would be pretty easily able to put something together. It's within the policy guidelines, so it'll be just a matter of identifying appropriate options for the council to select from.
And I believe, if I recall, soon after Keith's passing, now just over two years ago, the chamber might have some feedback also, because he contributed so much with the chamber and volunteered. So, there's been discussion about a street naming potentially out there, so it might be good for staff to consider talking to the chamber also. Appreciate that. Do we need a motion in addition to what we're discussing, or is this dialogue okay? All right. Good. Councilmember Legay.
If I may, address Councilman Elke. Councilman Elke, are you proposing the naming of a new street or the renaming of an existing street? I think that, as we look at the policy, that's something we need to decide on, I guess.
I'd like to see what, Mayor, if I may, I'd like to see whatever staff is able to present to us, old streets and new streets. I know there's some discussion, as Keith was so involved with the downtown area, I know there was some discussion of the avenue in Verde River where it goes around to Paul Norden Parkway, as there's not too many businesses on that particular stretch. That was a discussion at least. So, I'd like to, you know, that could certainly be one of many that may be available.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
And just remind folks, like we did today, going to the library to sell, to recognize or see the recorder's new kiosk there in the library for recording documents. Remind everyone to take note of Keith's memorial there on that nice rock and the plaque there commemorating his memory here in our community. He did so much. So, thank you, guys. We'll have further discussion on that. Did we move on? Did we take a vote on this item? We did not vote on this item. All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
Thank you very much. Item number six, consideration resolution 2011-30, approving the fee schedule for various town services for fiscal years 2011 through 12. Julie?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In previous years, this fee schedule has always been included with the adoption of the budget, but due to some legislative changes, we now have to separate it out, give public notice, and itemize it separately. So, that's why this is before you tonight. You also have received a fresh copy of the fee schedule with a revised effective date. Originally, the original document said with an effective date of August 4, and that was my error. I didn't realize, or had forgotten that we need to give 30 days. So, now the effective date is September 4. And your revised schedule should also highlight those fees that have changed since last year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know we've received a lot of comment on the fire inspection fee, and I would be happy to address that now, if the council wishes that we talk specifically about that fee.
I think that's great. Let's do that, so we don't overlook it at all.
Okay, thank you. Our first comment is really the, this fee, which was a new fee last year, was not a new fee this year, has really been a misnomer, and we talked about whether it's really a survey fee or an inspection fee. And actually, it is a commercial fire inspection fee. So, I think the name of this fee has caused a lot of confusion. But the purpose of the fee or the program was to conduct safety inspections on commercial business in town and verify that all the fire protection systems are in good working order and up to date. For example, restaurants have to have their hoods inspected every six months, and so the fire department goes in and makes sure that those inspections are done, and that's for public safety, and that they comply with all town codes as well. It also provides the fire personnel with a visual inspection of where the equipment is located in each business, so that in the event of a fire, they know what resources they have in the building. And this makes it easier if they have to respond to a fire, they know exactly what resources are there. This service benefits the property owners through better ISO ratings, which result in lower fire insurance premiums, and we recently went from a four to a three, which is the best benefit possible. The fees were adopted last year, and the first billings went out in January of 2011. So, all the businesses that were inspected were issued bills at that time. The fees are assessed per unit for, because a 10-unit building receives 10 times more service than a one-unit building, so the fees are assessed per building. The property owners are billed rather than the tenants, because as the inspections are completed, they're entered into our MUNIS system, which matches the county and the GIS databases, so all the properties are the same and up to date. The Town General Fund pays for the contract with Rural Metro for fire and emergency services. This fee was implemented to recover some of the costs, it doesn't recover all of the cost, of providing this service to the property owners who benefit, so that these costs don't get borne by all of the residents in town. And vacant suites are not inspected or billed. With that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions on this fee or any other fee. Both the fire captain and the assistant captain are here to answer any questions specifically related to the inspections and why they're necessary.
I think that'd be great to hear from our fire professionals as to, this is not a new inspection, this is something that's gone on probably for quite some time, and apart from what Ms. Gaddy shared, what are the benefits? What are the reasons? Is this a common thing done around the country? And then perhaps, what do other communities charge? Maybe Ms. Gaddy has that.
Thank you, Mayor Schlum. And counsel, I appreciate the opportunity to address this issue. We've been doing the fire inspections on an annual basis in businesses for quite some time now. The thing that is new is this fee. And we're actually a little bit late to, for the fees, because most other cities and departments, if not all of them, around the state have had fire fees for quite some time. And those are also related to plan review, it would be inspections of new occupancies and those kind of things. And this, this annual fee is just one piece of that. But we haven't had any fees forever until 2010, is when the fees went into effect. Just to give you an idea, and it's kind of a misnomer when we say fire fees, because that money does not come to the fire department, just to be clear. That money goes into the general fund of the town to recoup some of the costs in relation to that. It is required by code, and it's also, it gives us authority, and that's in the International Fire Code, Section 106. And that's adopted by town code. So, that is our town code that we do inspect these occupancies. We look for things like Ms. Gaddy referred to as hood systems, we look at the sprinkler systems, we look at alarm systems, we look for general housekeeping issues, we look for open electrical boxes, we look for blocked exits and things like that. And these are things that can have a strong impact on a business. Statistics show, depending on what source you look at, that 25 to 40% of businesses do not reopen after a fire. So, a pretty significant thing there, and we feel like we are making an impact. And not only does it affect that business, but it can affect neighboring businesses as well. So, it's important that we get into these things. As far as the fee goes, like I said, that's not, that's not part of what we're about. We're about, about safety, and that's really all this is about. Ms. Gaddy did mention the ISO rating, that's a big part. The other big part she kind of alluded to was about us getting our firefighters into each occupancy. Very important for us to be able to get inside, look at where all the exits are, look at where we have fire access, to be able to effectively fight these fires. We also get in there and, in more complex occupancies, we actually go in there and map them, and we digitize these maps, and we put them in our mobile computers. So, responding fire units can see the building inside, the floor plan, and also the command officers on the outside can get a good visual of what's going on outside. So, these are very important to us. With that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Randy. I'm sure we have a few. Any one? I have a couple more. Oh, thanks. Any speaker cards on this item?
Yes, Mayor, one card. Gordon Pitsenberger.
Thank you. Randy will get back to you. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Pitsenberger.
Mayor and counsel, I'd like to speak to you about the fire survey fee, which I think is an unnecessary tax and an unfair tax. I believe our firemen are paid whether they're in the firehouse playing cards or resting, or whether they're walking through a building telling the tenant that... or whether they're walking through a building telling the tenant that their fire extinguisher has to be replaced, that they're being paid regardless. So I don't see where this extra charge is valid. So I'm really wondering what, how is it, what cost is a town trying to recoup? The fee is being charged, that's being charged is an unfair fee, and the reason why I say that is, we have a building on Parkview that is 9,600 square feet. We have 11 units in that building. Our fee for that, and we received, we received a bill of $75 already, because they went through three units. So our bill would be $275 if they, if they inspect all 11 units. The building across the street, which is a bowling alley, is 21,000 square feet. It's divided into three units. Their fee would be $75. So that building is two and a fourth times bigger than our building, but we're paying three and a half times more than they would pay. I don't see how that's, how that's fair. If you had a neighbor living across the street from you who was living in a 20,000-square-foot house, and you're living in 5,000, and his tax bill is lower than yours, you'd be screaming like a banshee. So I just, you know, this is the same, same type thing, I feel. Businesses in towns are struggling, landlords are struggling, we're having a hard time keeping tenants, rents keep going down. So it's really a struggle just to pay your, pay your mortgage on these buildings, and our costs keep going up. I really would like to see something done to make this tax, this fee more fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pitsenberger. Anyone else?
No.
Okay, thanks. Randy?
If I may, Mayor, I failed to talk about one other thing you asked about, and that was a comparison of fees around the valley. And I'll just give you kind of a little snapshot. If you're in Queen Creek, they have an annual fee for high-risk occupancies, which could be either large or hazardous materials involved. That would be a $100 annual fee. If you're a medium risk, that would be $37.50 per year, and the low-risk, small establishments are $11.67. If you're in Mesa, their higher-risk occupancies are $450 per year. Then it goes down to 250 for medium, and then the low risk is $50 a year. And then Chandler charges $40 a year per business regardless of size. Glendale is $207 per year regardless of size. Not all departments do charge a fire safety survey fee or an occupant's, an inspection fee, but a large number do.
All right. Thanks for that. Councilmember Legay?
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, from your perspective as a professional and in the business you're in, and particularly prevention and fire safety, what is the benefit to a business owner or a property owner for having this type of inspection?
Well, I would, I would kind of go over some of the things we talked about a little bit, would be that ISO rating change. And this, these inspections on an annual basis counted for like 10 points, which really kind of put us over the hump to get us to the lower rate. So I'm sure your, your fire insurance rates alone would more than cover the $25 fee that we're asking. The other things are, you know, safety to the occupants, whether they're the employees there, the business owners, also the patrons that come in, you know, our town residents or customers. And we're looking forward to their safety, too. We're looking out for them as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Would it be fair or accurate, Julie or Andrew, to say that this sitting council has already voted twice for these fees? Once in 2010, basically for all the fees in 2010 with the budget, and then, since we discussed this with this budget, even though the legislature says we have to remove this, we've already approved these?
Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, this is not a new fee for this current year that we're going into now, 11/12. It was a new fee for last year fiscal year 10/11.
Mayor, but the other thing is that when we passed our budget this past June, we're not, this entire fee schedule, part of that discussion and understanding by this council when we passed that budget, that this fee schedule so was, was part of this year's budget, 11.
Mayor Shlum, Councilmember Dickey, that's correct.
So Mayor, the 7-0 vote last year's budget, the 7-0 vote this year's budget, has already approved everything in front of us right now.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson?
Well, but I, we can look at that the other way also. If, if we wanted to oppose the fee schedule, we would have had to vote no on the whole budget. So I appreciate the fact that it is being handled separately now, because it really, I mean, I think it deserves to be handled separately, because it does give us the opportunity of voting up or down.
Councilmember Legay?
I believe when we had our budget discussion, we unbundled the fee schedule and spent significant amount of time on it, and we did make amendments, liquor license, so forth and so on. That's neither here nor there. The fact that this is before us, I'm glad this is before us, and I'm glad citizens have come forward, or business owners, with some questions, because I was a little baffled when I looked at the word "survey." It's really not a survey, it's, it's an inspection. And as you stated, it's part of fire code requirements nationally, and it helps reduce the cost of insurance, which is a benefit to a business owner. When we first discussed this, I was a little uncomfortable with this, and I'll just toss something out if we have the latitude to have this discussion. I would like to see us look at a more equitable system for applying this fee, either by square footage or some other calculation. We briefly talked about that when this was introduced to us a few years back. One of the thoughts I had at the time, and mentioned it, I'm not sure it had any legs, was the notion that a building, i.e. a building that houses five offices, would have a fee of $25 for the building versus each individual unit. So I would like to just put that out for discussion, if there's a possibility to amend this and/or to make a recommendation that we table this and have staff do some research and come back to the drawing board with something that I could accept and see as more equitable. And those were just two suggestions I'm not going to problem solve out here. So I just want to put that out for consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hanson?
I would support that, and if that was a motion to table, I would second that.
You want to have a little more?
Yeah. Could, Gordon brought up some good points, and it kind of goes along with what Henry said, and I just wondered if you could maybe speak to that, because, you know, if you take a building that's large, you know, maybe even like a grocery store, it takes a lot more time to go through a large building than just a number of small suites.
Mayor and council, Member Hanson, that is correct, and I can speak to the importance of the, of the fire safety inspection, but I'm going to defer to Ms. Getty as far as the method of the financial collections and billing and those kind of things.
Mayor, members of the council, again, as we talked about earlier, the methodology and the reason that, that we chose it per unit was, you know, for several reasons. One is, if we choose another methodology for building, if we do one building versus per unit, then one building may have 11 or 20 units in it and pay $25, but get 20 times more service. And again, what the goal, what we are, what we would do when you have a fee for service is make it, recover the cost, you know, some of the cost, versus if you have a unit, one building that just has one unit, they pay $25. And the other piece of that is, you know, trying to look at other ways to do it. If we look at it per square footage, or if we look at it per piece of equipment, we don't have any ability in our system to measure square footage, number of pieces of equipment. So somebody would have to go and either count the pieces of equipment and tag them all. Our system has now every unit in Fountain Hills that's matched up with the county and with our GIS. So it's very easy for the, the firemen to go in and they inspect it, and they go back and put it into the system. And it's real easy to identify, and it also identifies who the property owner is. And again, it's all tied into the county system. So if we tried to do it per square footage, somebody would have to go and measure the square footage of every building or unit.
Or perhaps we could delineate it by small, medium, large, with some sort of a guide, or perhaps based on the higher-risk usage, as some of the other communities had it, which made, one of them made the nominal risk at $11. There's obviously risk, there's benefit, and obviously a need for the fire inspections to occur annually. And there's benefits, obviously. Another one that you mentioned, I think briefly, was safety to firefighters. If there is the darn fire that happens, you guys are more aware of what you're walking into, potentially. But I think perhaps there's an opportunity for us to come up with something. Councilmember Brokey?
Julie, what would the, what is the anticipated or projected revenue stream for, at the $25 per unit rate for this coming year? And are all the buildings, I guess, and the second question would be to our fire marshal, are all the buildings in town inspected every year? So is this, is this a consistent revenue stream year after year? I mean, what is it that the town's recouping?
Mayor Shlum, Councilmember Elke, it's a total of $10,000, and every building is inspected every year. And we inspected some of them in January, because we didn't have all of the pieces of property in the system. So when we did the inspection in January, and we billed all the property owners at that time, and the property owners paid. So we didn't capture all of them. And so now, when July came along, now we're doing the, the rest of the inspections, but they all will be inspected every year, and the total is $10,000.
Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, the other part of this is time, which I think is, is what we're kind of talking about, is the time that it takes to do the inspections. And that means it's, it's time that's being spent to do this, and from what you had mentioned earlier, it's a way of trying to do some kind of cost recovery that is for the entire town. Is that just a big time? Would that just be like a really difficult thing to try to assess? And then to get back to what Mr. Pitsenberger was talking about with the different units, which is about vacancies, and do you not charge for vacancies? So it's kind of two questions. Is looking at the time spent doing them just kind of, just too hard to get your arms around? And do, and do you not charge for vacancies, for vacant units?
Mayor Shlum, members of the council, I can answer the second question. We do not charge for vacant units, they don't inspect vacant units. As far as the size and the time, that would, I'd have to turn that over to Randy to answer that question.
Randy?
Mayor and council, as far as tracking time, I don't know if that would be doable or not. Anything's doable, but I just don't know how much of a burden that would put on, on our crews. I would almost think that if you wanted to graduate it like that, maybe the size of the occupancy in the hazard classification might be more appropriate as far as billing goes, if you wanted to break it out like that.
Councilmember Brokey?
Randy, what, during the course of one of your inspections, what's the level of difficulty that you think it would be for your, for your fire personnel to estimate or give a square footage? You know, if they were to add that to their list of, you know, when they fill out their check sheet, how difficult would that be?
Mayor and council, I don't believe it'd be all that difficult. I think that would be fairly easy to come by. A lot of people know their square footage off the top of their head, and if they don't, we have a little measuring wheel we could, we could take with us. It shouldn't be an issue. It'd be a one-time deal, but they want it to be in the system.
Yeah. Mayor, I would be more in favor of something a little more equitable along the lines of what Councilmember Legay was saying, as far as based on the square footage. And I think we should take a look at that in that, in that term, because I think it's a little more fair as far as the property owner and what was raised here this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Dickey?
I mean, just one other thing, Randy, the, we're all talking about the time to do the inspections or the, the resources used, but if there is any kind of, some follow-up and paperwork and time, I just want to make sure people keep that in mind, too, because it's not just going through, it's the reporting and whatever follow-up has to be done. So just keep that in mind, too, when you talk about cost recovery.
Councilmember Legay?
I think there's a good argument for, for cost recovery. After all, we pay $3 million for fire service for the town of Fountain Hills, and I don't believe anyone really pays for that service. I guess you could say the taxpayers pay for that service through sales tax, which is typically a pass-through for, for most businesses. I would like to, once again, look at a system that's, that's more, more equitable. I think we have had people come before us that I sense understand perhaps the need and the importance of this, but at the same time are looking for something a bit more, more equitable. So I'm glad we've had this discussion, because we had a brief discussion on this in the past, and it just didn't, didn't, didn't net out that, that way. So I would suggest that we table this item and make a motion to table, and have staff come back with some, maybe there's no need to table.
Is the tabling just this fee or the entire fee schedule?
Wait till, if there's other discussion on the fee schedule, perhaps.
Okay, I'll pull back on that. Yeah.
If you'd like, if there are other items to cover. Good. Thank you, Randy. Any other items related to the fire, commercial fire inspection fee, and it's just for businesses, not for residential?
That's correct, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. On with the fee schedule. Thanks, Randy. On our fee schedule, I know most of the yellow areas were changes that were, and some of them were increased for utilities to pay for improvements, I think back to streets that they tear up or rights away they might disturb. Outside of that, I know we talked a lot about the liquor license fee, which we reduced And I think the trend over the last several years has been to continue to reduce fees and encourage use at the community center, and make it more equitable by allowing them to not rent it out for four-year, four hours, but two-hour windows for the classrooms, and instead of eight hours, a four-hour window for the ballrooms, which reduces the fee for the users. I can't think of another fee we might have raised outside of those utility, those fees that utilities would pay to help us fix the streets, but the whole gist of council, and obviously we've all been sensitive to fees and supporting business in particular, I think we've been reducing our fees. I just, this is the one fee that's been instituted last year that we're discussing changing how we go about it this year, but it's not a new fee from this year.
Correct.
We're not changing this one, it's just, we may change how it's applied in future discussions. Okay. That's what I thought. I think there, there have been discussion about things being more costly for business, and that's not, I think we've been reducing costs to businesses here consistently. The, any other, and it was nice to have everything highlighted in yellow. Anything else, and either what was changed or what was not changed for discussion tonight before it may be potentially tabled for another discussion?
Mr. Mayor, question for Randy in terms of the inspection schedule. Between now and the time period when the council would meet again to discuss this, whether it's at the next meeting or the, the only meeting in September, will there be inspections for which more fees will be incurred? Or is the current fee, if left alone in this fee schedule and then readdressed at the other time, going to result in anything? I think is, is a key question for us.
And we'll see whether the inspection would stop, just perhaps what's billed would stop.
Mayor and Mr. McGuire, actually, we can do whatever the council would like to do. If you'd like us to put a freeze on inspections currently, we have a schedule that kind of takes us throughout the entire year. We just want to make sure that every business gets hit once per fiscal year. And so we're very flexible in how we do that, and we're happy to hold them until you give us direction, or however you guys would like.
Mr. Mayor, if we could, because the fee schedule has, was officially adopted, you know, as part of the budget, those fees, those revenues were anticipated as part of the budget, each time you push out the schedule, it's changing what you're going to have for your revenues for the, the whole year. And I know that some of the fees are already ready to be implemented, so I, that's what we're wondering, do you want to take the entire thing and put it on hold, or do you just want to readdress this issue as we go forward? And, you know, at the next meeting, or at worst, the, the meeting in September, resolve this issue and not have any further inspections between now and then, so no one else is charged?
Good. Well, council, it seems like, if there's no other discussion on the other items, I would prefer just to move forward, and then if we can address that one separately, that would probably be a good idea. Council, how do you feel about that?
What?
Yes, Councilmember Vice Mayor, continue.
Yes, thank you. I think that for a lot of us, we've already been charged for it. And I think it's going to be bad if we change the schedule in the middle of it. And I think it's going to be bad if we change the schedule in the middle of it, or the fees in the middle of this and charge somebody so many different than what we were charged. Because then you're going to have everybody and his brother in here. So I would think that we better just leave it go and address it. But I don't think we can change it now because our whole section's been all taken care of, all 35 units. And I know some of the rest of them have, but I mean, and I see where Gordon's coming from, but I think that all of them have been done the same. And if we start to change this in the middle of the stream, we're going to have some hostile people coming in here. So I would rather leave it alone and address it when we can.
Thank you. That's a good point, as far as those that have already been charged, though. Good point. But as far as the process of the fee schedule itself, is there is a way for us to just adopt this tonight, come back and, and address the fire item?
Mr. Mayor, if we're continuing to do the inspections on an annual basis, everybody who's already been charged, as Vice Mayor Cantino correctly points out, to be consistent throughout the year, you can have your discussion at the next meeting, make your decision, and then implement that as it comes to the next cycle of inspections, so that we don't have a slip, any slippage in there that as soon as someone comes up for their next inspection, they'll be on the new schedule, but all the people yet to be done in 2011 will be treated the same as the people in the first half of the year.
Councilmember Broke, thanks.
One thing, as far as direction to staff, as far as looking at this, we have a couple of different ways. If we're going to base it on the square footage, it's going to be, let's say, just to make it easy, a dollar per square foot. I'm not suggesting that, but, or you could have a range, if it's anywhere from zero, you know, one square foot to, you know, 1,200 or 1,500 square foot of flat fee. The reason I bring this up is because I'm curious, as far as the calculations are concerned, is this something that the fire personnel are going to be doing, the calculations on-scene and billing and notifying staff to do that? Or is staff going to be doing, refiguring this when they get the inspection report or the notice and saying, well, I've got to now do the multiplication, do this for each individual unit that an inspection was done? So I think staff should look at that, maybe a range might be more appropriate, so that there's a flat fee for each range, so that we're not having to do all this manual calculations each, each time.
Yep, good idea. All right, so process-wise for the fee schedule, are we able to adopt this? And then we are able to, if we give, in conjunction with adopting it, assure that we're going to readdress the fire inspection fee?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, whether it's at the next meeting or the meeting in September at the latest, we'll make sure that you have the information you requested tonight to be able to address it in whatever manner going forward you want to.
Fire Chief.
Mr. Mayor, council, I'd just like to make one thing clear. Irregardless of what you decide to do tonight or next two weeks or whatever, we're going to continue to do fire inspections. If we stop doing fire inspections, it would probably trigger ISO to come in and do a regrade. And if we did a regrade, there could be a potential, if we lost enough points, where we could drop back to a four instead of a three, which would have an adverse impact upon our business community. So, and plus all the safety issues that Chief Roberts talked about, we've done these inspections for the 15 years that I've been here, and will continue to do them, irregardless of whatever action that the council so chooses to take. But I just wanted the public to be sure and clear on that, that we are not going to stop inspections. And this time of year is kind of a slack time for us in inspections because we're getting ready to go into a fire prevention month, and we don't do inspections in fire prevention months. So, you know, there is time that, you know, you can work through your process and decide what you want to do, but we are going to continue to inspect.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Legere.
Chief, I'm glad you brought, you kind of brought us back to that particular part of the discussion. I think it's, I would certainly be in favor of continuing the inspections because we don't want a public safety issue in that regard. And the moratorium itself would be put on the billing until we resolve the stratified system that we come up with, small, medium, large, or whatever the case is. And it would be the address of the building, so hopefully, system-wise, that would be a little easier to accommodate. But I would agree with you wholeheartedly. We're putting moratorium on, on the billing, not necessarily inspections.
And plus, it's, it's part of our contract, rural metro and the town, that we do this. So if we did stop doing that, we'd have to go in and readdress the contract.
Councilmember Dickie.
Mayor, just to clarify, Councilman Cantino, you were basically saying, since they didn't start till January, that we would just keep this in place until January then, when the next, when the next year came up, that would be, so it's not really a moratorium right now? Is that, is that what you were?
Well, all the people have been billed in our whole area and our whole section of town. So if you start changing this, you're going to have to treat them just as well as you did the other ones. I mean, go back and redo everything, so you're just reiterating a lot of paperwork. And you might as well just stop that and wait till we get it all resolved, and then do it on the next go-around.
Okay, so Mayor, so I think I would agree, rather than, I don't know if Councilman Legere was talking about a moratorium right now, or if he was talking about, when we start going through the next round, we'll start with the new, because I would tend to agree with, with what you, I think you're saying, so, yeah.
Right.
Council, the, so, that would mean approving the fee schedule and the commercial fire inspection fee as-is, continuing that until next budget year, when then it would be changed. Is that something the council wants to do, or do we want?
Calendar.
Calendar, oh, calendar year. Okay, thank you. So we don't have a great deal of time on that. So when would we readdress the fee for that commercial fire inspection?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's probably best, while this is fresh in everyone's minds, to address it as soon as the fire folks are comfortable bringing back a recommendation that Julie and everyone can discuss and see which is the best way to implement it, and then bring back kind of a best practice recommendation based upon Councilmember Broke's, you know, range approach. I think that there's very likely a process just like that in one of our other communities in the state, that someone else has already invented this wheel. I think it's just a process of finding the right fit.
Anything else on the fee schedule?
Motion.
If we make a motion, let's make sure we're clear. At this point, we'll have the staff working on the fire inspection fee, and then bringing it back to us. The new fee would be instituted in the next calendar year, so five months from, four months from now.
And that the motion includes the 9/4 effective date version that was handed out and includes the court's fees?
All right. Council are comfortable with that moving forward? We got a motion in a second, I believe, correct, on this item?
If we don't, I will.
Do we have a motion in a second? No one out on this, let's get a, I thought we did, I thought you read it. But let's just make sure here.
Not with that 9/4, you changed to September.
Okay. Who wants to make a motion on item number six, the fee schedule?
Well, if you want to make a motion, we'll just make a motion to keep the price or the fee the way it is right now till the next calendar year, till we can decide how we want to do the square footage and institute it on the next calendar year.
Good. Do we need to allude to the resolution?
Yeah, Mayor, that.
If we already have a resolution, a motion to pass 2011-30, then we're fine, because the direction's been pretty clear on what we need to do next, and it won't impact this resolution. So if we already have a motion in a second, you can just take your vote.
Do we have a motion in a second?
No.
Okay, so we don't have a motion in a second. Now, can we get a motion to approve Resolution 2011-30, approving the fee schedule for the various town services for fiscal years 2011 and 12 effective September 4th, 2011?
So.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion, council? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, six, zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And number seven, consideration of possible action regarding appointment of an interim town manager and potential temporary modifications to town policies to facilitate the appointment. Welcome, Joan, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you, Mayor and council. With the recent resignation of our town manager, Rick Davis, we have the need for the council to appoint an interim town manager until such time that we can have a new town manager on board, hopefully by December 1st. You have a copy of the job description, I think a town clerk just handed out, of the deputy town manager. And in that job description, it clearly states that that position will serve as the acting town manager in the absence of our regular town manager. So typically, this would be an automatic appointment just by nature of the job description. The reason it's up for discussion on the agenda tonight is that we also have a policy that's in our employee manual that has been approved by the council, and I think you all have a copy of that policy also. It's the employment of relatives policy or the nepotism policy, which states that an employee cannot directly or indirectly supervise an immediate family member. And in this case, our deputy town manager has a spouse that is also employed by the town. So that's why it's up, why we would ask the council to discuss that issue tonight. That being said, the council has the ability to waive that policy temporarily until a new town manager is on board. So that's what we're asking for the discussion tonight, as well as possible modification of the interim town manager's salary while that person serves in that position.
Thank you, Joan. Yeah, let's have discussion here. Any speaker cards? On this item?
No, sir.
Item number seven. No, thanks. Councilmember Dickie.
Mayor, just a question, Joan. The, the, the description says that they would serve as the acting, but we are, are voting on interim. Is there a difference in that? Basically, is it kind of the same thing? Just?
I would defer to our town attorney on that definition.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dickie, I don't think that the town code or the personnel rules actually define interim town manager. I think that's a term that we generally just use to describe the person who serves in the role. Between the time that the appointment is, the resignation and the appointment is made, the last time it was because we didn't have a job description of a person who immediately succeed to the role. That's happened since that time, so interchangeable as far as working.
So, Mayor, just to be clear, if it wasn't that we had to look at changing or waiving some policy, then it would have just been kind of an automatic, an automatic change in acting or interim, would have just been that way?
Mr. Member, Councilmember Dickie, the deputy town manager's role is anytime the manager's gone to act in that capacity. So the council could decide to appoint, you know, a different interim, they could leave everything as-is. Until we were given an indication one way or the other, Julie's role would be to continue on as the acting town manager until such time as she doesn't need to be. But because of the nepotism policy, we wanted to make sure we brought that up and had the council's buy-in to that nuance, since it is a violation, or at least it's, it's a town rule that exists that we wanted to make sure the council was okay with prior to moving forward.
And thank you, sorry. One more, Mayor. The interim position, then, if there is a salary adjustment, that's absolutely appropriate, and it would be either way, if we called acting or interim?
That's correct. And we haven't really had a whole lot of opportunities for this particular role. It's been just a few times, and each time it's generally been handled at the time that the council designates someone to be the interim, and they make the decision as to whether or not there'll be an adjustment.
Thank you.
All right, good. Joan, are there guidelines as far as consideration of an additional wage for the interim position and the interim role that you've seen that we've done in the past?
Well, we've never really had the, I know with, when Kate Zanin was the interim before, after Mr. Pickering left, we just made sure that her salary was higher than the top director's salary, because obviously that position would be supervising or overseeing, you know, all the town staff. So we increased her salary accordingly so that she was higher than any director.
Okay. Andrew, as far as the compensation for, for an interim, what are we to, what should we cover here tonight, or what should we not cover here tonight? I mean, it's, it's an item that is discussed or adopted typically in our fee, not our fee schedule, but our, our wages.
Pay plan.
Yeah, pay plan. But here for tonight, is this something we should be agreeing on tonight as a council?
Mayor, members of the council, you can do it any way you want. You can talk as specifically as you'd like, or you can direct staff to do what they did prior, identify the, the highest department head salary, and then whatever increment you say above that, you know, that would be some sort of an automatic number. Whatever the salary is, the increment above could be the interim amount. I don't know where that falls with particular salary ranges right now. I mean, I guess that's the caveat to it. You want to make sure that you're not giving someone a pay decrease just for using that formula. If it results in a decrease, obviously, that wouldn't be okay.
How comfortable are you with this discussion? Ms. Getty? It's kind of, that's why I asked our town attorney, it's kind of an odd discussion to have around wage, but it's, it's in, it's a factor we just want to make sure we talk about. So thank you, Andrew. Other questions for Joan or discussion? Or are we trying to come up with something? Councilmember Broke.
I think the first thing we look at is, is the council going to be appointing someone? I mean, I think Ms. Getty is the default acting town manager in the absence of an actual town manager. So, I mean, that discussion, if Ms. Getty is going to be the acting town manager, which I would agree with. And the next question is, do we want to make the adjustment to the policy? And then finally, is if there's going to be a pay increase to act in that role? And of course, one of the concerns that I had is ensuring, as Ms. Getty does work also as the finance director, ensuring that that particular department is, is staffed and that the duties of acting town, as town manager do not interfere with the finance department and the finance department's preparation of the budget for this coming fiscal year, because that's certainly very important to the town.
Good, thank you. So I think if, if we're, if we don't have a lot more discussion, we might be able to envelop that into one motion to move forward on. Or do you think we could, we should take it incrementally? Is that what you're, you're saying, Councilmember Broke?
Mayor, I was just suggesting that we take it incrementally.
Okay.
It'd be the, probably the easiest and, you know, probably the more clear.
I think you're right. I think let's have discussion, if, you know, obviously you're open to talk about anything, let's have a discussion around each item and then envelop it into a motion. Let's do that. So, related to the interim, Ms. Getty becoming our interim, council discussion on that item? I think most of us have known Ms. Getty and appreciate the hard work she's done, and I think she's filled in in this role already and confident, particularly given a quick timeframe in finding a new town manager, that I'm confident in her ability to help us through this time. Any discussion on that? Councilmember Dickie.
Can I make a motion?
Okay, we'll do it that way.
I'll move to appoint Julie Getty as interim town manager until a new town manager is appointed by the council and make the necessary modifications to town policies as necessary to facilitate the appointment.
Very good. Any seconds on that?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on that motion? Councilmember Hanson.
I do have a concern with the way this is written. I mean, it clearly says, "No family member as defined above, or a town council member or the town manager shall be employed by the town of Fountain Hills during that individual's tenure." And I'm just, I'm worried about what kind of a message this is sending, that we're taking a very definitive rule here, and we're saying, we're going to, we're just going to change it for now. And I don't know, I don't know what kind of a message that's sending to the rest of the staff. So I have concerns with that part. And, you know, we're being put in a position where it's kind of like an either-or. So it's, it's difficult.
Councilmember Dickie, thanks.
Mayor, Andrew, could you please go over what you said right at the beginning about our, that the council has some sort of flexibility?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think that what we're talking about is the town's policy and procedure manual. The council always has flexibility over administering, modifying, or doing whatever you want with that policy, as you do with just about any other code or provision that the town's adopted. In this case, the current interim or acting role has caused this to occur automatically. And Julie's role today causes a conflict with the nepotism policy, unfortunately, because the town manager indirectly supervises each and every employee. The town manager has the ability to hire and fire each and every employee. So I think we're already there. I don't know that we really, you know, whether she's in an acting role or an interim role, I don't think it's different. I think it's, you know, it exists today regardless. And that's why we were asking for direction from the council on your comfort level and temporarily. temporarily waiving that during the search process, which should be through the course of the rest of this calendar year.
I agree with Councilmember Hanson. It's there for reasons, it's there for some good reasons. In an interim position, we're, you're making a decision to modify that, to get through an occasion that seems like the most, the common sense approach, and that's to waive this on an interim until there is a permanent person placed. So it just seems like it's, I'm not sure another way around it, other than appointing someone else. And I think you have to weigh, you know, the pros and the cons on that, and in my opinion, that would be not good for the town. But any other thoughts on that, Councilmember Cantino or Vice Mayor?
Yes, I personally don't have anything against Julia or, can't say her name right now, Reno, but it's already around town. She's gonna be the town deputy manager, and Reno's gonna be there. So we're already getting talk about this already in town. So I think if we can squelch it, or do what we have to do, this is what I'd like to do tonight, so we can set the residents and the citizens of this town at ease of what's going on.
Thank you. And Councilmember Legay?
Once again, I think by policy, by default, by her job description, she is the acting town manager in the absence of the manager. So if there's any confusion, it's a matter of reading the job description. Of course, most people haven't had the benefit of doing that. Mayor, if I may, Joan, can you recall, you've been here a while, our town attorney's been here for a while, has there ever been another occasion where we've created a waiver in a personnel policy on a temporary basis?
No, not to my knowledge.
I don't know that we had this exact policy in place, but we did have a nepotism policy in place when we had a council member and a staff member that wasn't directly under the council's authority. And we had a policy at the time that wasn't clear enough on it, and so we had some clarification done, but I don't know if there was ever an official statement made by the council as a waiver.
Thank you. Mayor, if I may.
The options, the options are appointing someone else that doesn't have that conflict. However, we want perhaps the most qualified person in that role that's had the most experience in that role on our staff. And although we have other directors that are awesome, that could perhaps do the job, I think Julie brings more of that experience to the table. So it's definitely the best decision, decision from that perspective. Are there any possible options from a personnel perspective that anything that occurs with that particular employee is somehow circumvented around the acting town manager? In other words, if there was a disciplinary issue or anything that came up regarding employment or performance, that it would be removed from the realm of the acting town manager, and by default, it would go to the Director of Human Resource, and then that next level would be the council? In other words, create an option to take Julie out of the picture, which is short of having a waiver. I'm trying to be creative here, as you can see. So I'm just putting that out there, if that's even a possibility.
Councilmember Legay, I, you know, right now, Mr. Getty reports to the community services director, so if there were any issues disciplinary or otherwise, currently, it would go, you know, through the community services director. But by virtue of what Andrew had said, that the town manager, interim town manager, has the ultimate authority to hire and fire anybody, I suppose, as it is right now, that position could override the director. With your suggestion, or with the council having the final say, I don't know that that would be appropriate either, because I know that their, you know, their involvement with personnel issues is not appropriate. So, but I understand what you're saying, if there's some way around that, maybe there could just be a waiver that the deputy, or the interim town manager would not have any authority over her spouse in this instance, until, you know, and then until a new town manager was, was hired.
Mayor.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Cantino?
I think I'd like to go with what Andrew says. She's in the capacity as acting town manager, and I think we haven't had any problems that way. And she would just continue in that role, but she still would be, if we decide tonight, the town, acting town manager till we get one. I think we've already been there since she's been appointed as deputy town manager. So I think we're comfortable with it. It's just that we got the one personnel issue like we talked about.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think that in the very unlikely event that we have something come up during the interim period, we'll come back to you with the recommendation for a separate hearing officer, someone else to handle anything that had to go beyond the department head level. We haven't had disciplinary issues go past the department head level up to town manager recently anyway. So I suspect we could fashion something if something occurs, but, you know, it, like I said, it exists already today. This is, this is not something that's being created by a council decision tonight. This situation is in existence right now.
Right.
And so really, whether you took action tonight or not, this issue still exists.
Right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else on this item? I hope we have a motion in a second. Mayor, if I may. Councilmember Legay?
Just to point clarification, we have a council person this evening, and I respect that opinion, that's uncomfortable with a waiver. So what I'm hearing you say is not necessarily a waiver. You're looking at some, a process that you would put in place in the event that there was a need for some type of review or disciplinary action. Is that correct, Andrew?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Legay, then, what I'm proposing tonight is that the council acknowledge that the, having Ms. Getty in this role is at variance to a policy that was adopted, and that continuing on with the council's discretion is what we're asking to do. What we're proposing is that in the event that we need to, we can propose an administrative procedure to ensure that there's no direct supervision.
And that's, that's what I would feel comfortable with, and that is short of a waiver from my perspective.
Do we need to make an amendment to the motion?
Mayor.
If we do that? Andrew?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as we said, this is a somewhat informal procedure anyway, because this is a policy and procedure issue. It's not a adopted code, it's not an adopted, you know, provision in your town code or ordinance. So, you know, policy and procedure manual is adopted by the council, but this is a, you know, of the, of all of your rules, it's one of your lower level ones.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, even if we do that, that we still need the waiver, because this still exists. So it's not, Andrew's suggestion was how to handle if something should happen, which is very unlikely, but if it should, that's how we'd handle it. But we still have to, you know, we still have to acknowledge that this exists and that we're going to make necessary modifications to the policy so that she can continue in this role that she's already in.
Thanks. Any other items? Councilmember Rocky?
Well, we've had this situation a number of times over the past many years, when our town managers left town for some reason or another, and Ms. Getty has been acting in that capacity. So if there's disciplinary issues or anything, we have in effect granted by not doing anything, a waiver of that, when Ms. Getty has been acting in that supervisory role when Mr. Davis isn't here. So I think we're acknowledging the conflict here tonight, and I do agree with the town attorney's suggestion that if there is an issue that goes beyond the department head for which Mr. Getty reports to, that we do appoint a special hearing officer to hear any issues relative to that in conjunction with our HR head, and deal with it at that point. Hopefully, we'll get a new town manager in place very soon. It appears by the estimates that were given by these bids, that could be as early as 90 days. So I think we're just dealing with a very narrow window of time here, and I don't think anything particularly special needs to be done at this point.
Anything else on this motion? All right. Anyone for the public? I think I may have asked it already. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Mayor, five one?
Thank you. All right. Other item related to this, was mentioned, the, do we need to, Andrew, address, or will we be discussing it some other time, related to salary?
Mr. Mayor, if you could provide direction tonight? That's great. If not, we'll be back to you shortly with a request for it.
Obviously, without a town manager and Julie filling the role of interim and not backfilling her position, because she'll be probably doing both, we have budget savings, you know, based on having less employees. So I think it's been probably a good practice and respectful one to compensate the interim as the town manager role. So I think along the lines of a percent, some percent above, the, one of her direct reports is probably an equitable direction to go. If council has any thoughts otherwise, please share it now. Is that good enough, Andrew? That given us direction?
Mr. Mayor, we'll...
Julie, you're not gonna pick this. You probably won't decide this one.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rocky, comments?
Oh, Councilmember Rocky?
Oh, just in addition to that presentation, I would just ask, as far as what our plan is, as far as the finance department is concerned, what staff's recommendations are gonna be or the plan in place to make sure that finances is aptly staffed?
Thank you. Because budget season starts up soon again. So, thank you, Councilmember Rocky. So, take note of that. Julie? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item. Item eight, consideration and possible selection of an executive search firm to conduct the search for a new town manager. Joan?
Thank you, Mayor and council. RFP, request for proposal for town manager search services was sent to nine executive search firms on July 7th, and the proposal due date to return those proposals was July 19th. A copy of that RFP, as well as an evaluation form, was given to the council on 7/11, so that you would have that information also. Consequently, seven proposals were returned, and copies of each of those proposals was given to the council on July 20th. The council was asked to evaluate and award points to each proposal based upon the scoring criteria as outlined in the RFP. The mayor also appointed a committee consisting of myself, Shawna Williams, Paul Mood, and Mark Mayer, to evaluate the proposals separate from the council, using the same criteria that was given to the council on the evaluation form, and asked us to present a summary of those proposals, as well as a recommendation to the council tonight. So the committee, the four members of the committee individually evaluated the proposals and then met to discuss their results. And although any one of these firms could probably provide a good service, it was the consensus of the committee that two firms stood out more than the others. They received the highest points based on the scoring criteria, but we also took the evaluation a little bit further. For example, we looked at any relevant past experience that these recruiters had, such as whether they themselves were ever a city or a town manager, or had a background in human resources. We felt that a lack of actual experience in those areas could be a disadvantage when choosing the best candidates for town manager position, because it's hard to understand what's actually required of a position until you've been there, done that. We also looked at how thorough their approach was. So even though they answered the RFP and they gave their approach, we looked kind of between the lines as to how thorough it was. Some mentioned, including staff and members of the community and their interview process, while others did not, and the committee thought it was important to include both. We looked at associated costs ranging anywhere from $15,000 to $27,000, and found that the highest cost didn't necessarily equate to a better service. Using all of this criteria, the committee is recommending tonight that the top two recruitment firms would be Slaven Management and the Mercer Group. And we did start checking the resources on, the references, I should say, on those two groups, so I have the information on that, too, if the council wants to hear about them. But I think at this point, maybe they'll turn it over to the council for discussion as you also evaluated these proposals and see what your results were.
Thank you, Joan. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right, thanks. Council. Discussion on this item, no motion quite yet. Figure out what we, what direction we feel we should go in. Obviously, we have all these options available to us that we've been presented. Is it seven? Yeah, seven firms responded with nice proposals, and most of them were very similar in their style and mentioning their past experiences around the country, here in Arizona. I had a question, Joan, related to Benziger?
Yes.
Do you know what the strengths of that firm appeared to be in your evaluation?
Okay.
And obviously, David Latshaw is a resource for that firm. Here in Fountain Hills, he's done a great, a lot of, a lot of work with us in the past.
They were actually rated the lowest of the seven from the committee, and the reason for that is a couple, a couple different things, actually. The Colin Benziger, who's the owner and would be the project manager, has never actually worked in a municipality. However, he is active in ICMA. And Dave Latshaw, who would be the consultant, would be the deputy project manager. So even though we're familiar with him, he may not be the main contact there. One of the cons we found with that firm is they did, that in their proposal, they did not talk about meeting with staff or citizen groups to develop a profile on the ideal candidate. And the only seniors, only senior staff members would meet briefly with final candidates. They, so they also didn't include a public meeting or a public forum, you know, to meet the candidates and have the opportunity for input. They're also a very small firm, but some of the other ones are, too, so their database may not be as extensive as some of the larger firms. Couple of things we did like about them is that they, they stated that they do not use newspapers or generic websites, because they generally do not produce the type of candidates they're seeking, and the committee agreed with that, with the generic part of that. Their cost was reasonable at $22,000 compared with the other ones. They were kind of right in the ballpark there.
All right, thank you. I know that, I thought it, the principal was a former town manager, but it does say a senior manager in government, so not sure if it was a town manager or not. Thank you very much. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thank you. Just off the bat, the Slaven was my first choice. I have a question about Mercer. I didn't see the community, maybe I missed it. How did they say they would handle a community?
I actually spoke to Mr. Mercer this afternoon. I put a call in early this morning, because I wanted some clarification on a couple things on their proposal. And he did say that they would have an assessment center with input from the council, is how they wanted to set that up. And he would include input from staff, citizen organizations to establish the profile for the candidate. And he said he would implement, and it does state that in the proposal, he will implement an assessment center-style interview process with both public and private components. When I talked to him today, I said, "Would that include, for instance, for example, maybe a public forum on a Saturday morning?" And he said, "Absolutely," and then that's at no additional cost to what he quoted. One of the cons that we found, that we thought was maybe a little strange with the Mercer Group, is that they wanted the council to notify all the unsuccessful candidates, and we thought that was a little different from many of the other ones, because most, most times, the recruitment firm will do that, not the council member. So, but I'm sure that, you know, you could work around that, or decline to do that if you chose Mercer Group. What he clarified to me today on the, in the telephone conversation, is that he stated in his proposal that they will provide several advertising alternatives with varying degrees of cost. And so I said, "Well, how, with your, your fees, how are we supposed to know exactly what, if it's gonna increase the cost or decrease the cost?" And his examples did not mention that they would advertise on any websites. But he said, "Yes, they do advertise on websites," and that these alternatives are all included in the $5,000 not to exceed cost. So whatever alternatives the council would agree to would not increase the cost above that $5,000 not to exceed. The only thing that would increase the bottom $15,000, which is this all-inclusive fee, because he's giving us a discount because we've used them before, the only additional cost might be if the council requests... the only additional cost might be if the council requested psychological evaluations on the top candidates because they don't have a psychologist onboard with them and they'd have to hire somebody from the outside. But that would be the only thing, if they had to use an outside entity to help with the evaluation, that would cause their fees to go up. Otherwise, it's a flat $15,000. Which was actually the lowest of, of all of the firms.
Councilmember Rockey?
Thank you. Ms. McIntosh, I understand we've used the Mercer Group in the past.
Yes.
What, what did we use them for?
When Tim Pickering was hired, that was the firm that was, was used to recruit at that time.
Have we used Slavin Management in the past?
No. To my knowledge, I think Mercer's the only consultant we've ever used to, you know, recruit any position.
I understand we've used, in the past, we've used a gentleman from-
Benzinger.
Benzinger?
Dave Latshaw was actually used to do a 360 evaluation on the town manager. That was when Mr. Pickering was here. He also facilitated some of the council retreats before Mr. Davis came onboard. And then Rick just started doing that himself. But prior to Rick, Dave Latshaw facilitated those retreats.
Okay. Mayor, one of the ones that stood out to me, and I, I think probably with any one of these, they're, they're most likely pulling from very similar pools of candidates. One of the things that I was most, well, impressed with, at least with one of them, was Waters. Let's see, the Waters Consulting Group. The thing that, that appealed at least to me was, it was a flat fee plus the candidate travel expenses, which all the other bids did not include, wouldn't be expected to include. They talked about an 80-day process. And then after the, a selection and appointment, that they would come back and do a team-building exercise with staff and that town manager. They had 200-plus emplacements. It appeared the program was put together, you know, at least me personally, the approach appeared to be laid out well. And the thing, again, for me is, some of them had wide ranges as far as, as far as what their advertising costs were going to be. And from my opinion, whenever you give a range, expect whatever the limit is on that particular range to be met. So if we had something where it was a flat fee and we knew exactly what we were going to get, whether it's Waters or any other one, that, that would be something that would appeal to me. But I really liked that team-building exercise that they had included in there as well. I thought that was kind of a nice little add. Thank you.
That's good feedback on that.
I would say the Waters group came in, with the committee, anyway, they came in towards the bottom. I think number six out of seven. And I think the cons that, the pros that we saw was just what Councilmember Elke had mentioned about the team-building workshop. We really liked that. They would do after 60 days after the new town manager started. And also that they would do a 360-degree performance appraisal on the town manager after 12 months. So that was an attractive part of their proposal, too. A couple of things that we didn't like too much is they, they did not mention utilizing the public at all when they were developing the profile for the ideal candidate. And they also had termination of three agreements for services in the past, which set up a little bit of a red flag. There was only other one firm that had termination of services while they were working for them. And that was like 19 times they were terminated before the service was done. And then Waters had three, three agreements that were terminated. Another thing is they asked, in their proposal, they said that they would ask the town to name an internal project manager, which I'm assuming they mean like a contact person, to set up the interviews and meetings and things like that, which is, which is normal, and there's, there's not a problem with that. But also to review the recruitment brochure and related advertising and to assist with the screening process when selecting the candidates for the semifinalists and the finalists. And we felt that's really the recruitment's, recruiter's responsibility, not a staff member's responsibility to narrow down those candidates. I mean, if they wanted input once they were narrowed down to the semifinalists, that's probably appropriate. But right from the beginning, we really felt that was their responsibility to do that. And also, we liked that they committed to delivering a group of finalists within 80 days. So I guess that could be good or bad. Maybe they're not taking their time in doing it. But we do want somebody, I know, by December 1st, so that might be a good thing. The, the head, lead consultant in Waters Consulting had never, has never worked, you know, in a municipality before. His background is a police chief and a director of public safety. And the senior consultant has 20 years in IT audit and management experience, but no municipality experience. So that was a con, in our opinion.
Thank you. Any other counsel feedback on ones you were most comfortable with? Maybe share why? So again, the, the committee, staff committee, Slavin and, what was the other one?
Mercer.
Oh, here it is.
Mercer Group.
And Mercer we used previously, and Joan, you're, you're probably part of that. How was the process with Mercer, obviously?
I wasn't involved. It was right, it was shortly after I came onboard with the town, so I wasn't greatly involved with it. The only thing that I remember, and coincidentally, one of the references mentioned the same thing about Mercer Group, is that when we used them, the top, we were not able to successfully negotiate a contract with the top two candidates. And so we were kind of forced to go with a third candidate. And I don't know if that was the recruiter's fault or, you know, the council was involved in that. I really don't know what the details were of that. But one of the references that we checked on the Mercer Group also said that they were unsuccessful in negotiating a contract with the top two candidates. But in their case, they said it wasn't the Mercer Group's fault. They were trying to do whatever they could, but the council couldn't agree, so.
On those, on the two that the committee recommended, was there a feeling on the strength of the project manager or the lead person from the organizations?
Well, yes. With Slavin, the, the lead project manager is local. He lives in Mesa. So their, their firm is out of Florida, I think. Yeah, no, Atlanta, Georgia. But he lives in Mesa. And he has 13 years as a city manager. He was six and a half years as the deputy city manager in the city of Mesa. And then the other management, city management positions were in different states, two, two other states, I think. He's also ICMA credentialed manager, which was the only one out of the group that, that was heavily involved with ICMA. He has a master's in public administration. And he was the past chairperson of the Committee on Professional Conduct with the Arizona City Managers Association. Robert Slavin is the president of that firm. He served as an assistant city manager and an HR director for Beverly Hills, California, although it didn't state when or how long he was in that position, but he did state that he was that. He was also assistant personnel director for the city of San Leandro, California. He has a bachelor's in political science, and he's completed all the graduate coursework for his master's in public administration.
And Mercer?
Oh, and Mercer. Jim Mercer is the president, and he will be the lead project manager if, if we were to hire this firm. He has his master's in business administration, and he's received a certificate in municipal administration. He was an assistant city manager of Raleigh, North Carolina. But again, he didn't state when that was or for how long that was. And the senior vice president, Carolyn Prince Mercer, which, not sure, maybe that's his spouse, would also be serving on his team. She has a bachelor of arts degree in history as well as a, as a doctor of jurisprudence. She practiced law for 20 years, and she was also a schoolteacher. And she, her specialty right now in the firm is public sector executive search. And their California office senior vice president was a personnel manager at the Pentagon, but never has worked for a municipality and has, that person has her bachelor's degree in English.
And retention was an interesting thing. I read through on some of these, the success of the, the candidate that's hired and how long they had abstained. I don't know if Slavin had mentioned that one in theirs, but the other one had an eight-year thing. But Councilmember Dickey, did you have a?
Yes, I want to mention that. Slavin was the one that had 95% five-plus years, I think.
Yes.
And then Mercer had an eight-year average.
Right.
Okay. Councilmember Rockey?
Joan, going back to Waters, you had said one of the red flags was because there was three early terminations.
That was one of the red flags, yes.
Sure.
And he also didn't mention, or the proposal didn't mention utilizing the public at all when they're, when they're developing a profile for an ideal candidate. And we just thought that was important to include some of the organizations.
Well, they provided an explanation as to the termination, the reasons for the termination being that the, the client, being the town or municipality, they, they reorganized their, and changed their staffing plan and no longer included a position being recruited. So that was one reason for a termination. The second, they decided to appoint an internal candidate, no longer wants to continue with the external recruitment. That was the second termination. Then the third was client encounters financial difficulties and eliminates the position being recruited. And that was the third termination. How are those red flags?
Well, just because they had terminations of agreements. And, and, you know, sometimes when the, and none of the other firms did. So, except for the one that had 19 in the last couple of years. So it was just one of the criteria that we used, a small amount of the criteria that we used because it was in the RFP. How many did they have? You know, that was one of the, the scoring points.
You'd agree. I mean, if, if a client, if we canceled, we, we contract with someone to do this and we cancel because we decide we're going to do something else.
Yes, except it's a little strange that they would contract with somebody and then back out of it, you know. It could happen. It could happen.
And you use that same criteria for all the-
Yes.
For all the-
Yes, because that was one of the things listed in the RFP that, that had a point signed to it.
I mean, you use the same criteria, that that's a red flag if they provided an explanation that the client no longer wanted to use the service.
There was only two that had that. That was Waters and the other one that had 19 terminations. I don't remember which one that was.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Religier?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Joan started off by saying that all of these firms are reputable and well-qualified, and I would agree with that. Going through and using the scoring criteria, which was closely aligned to our scope of work and our RFP, I came out with my top three or four candidates. Slavin was in, in that top three. Mercer was in that top three. And Anderson was in that top three. At the end of the day, going back and forth between the top three, I was going back and forth between Slavin and Mercer just because of their depth of experience in terms of being in this business for a while and the number of town managers or city managers they've hired. Slavin has, they've conducted recruitment for 200 city managers. I think that's, that's, that's a pretty good resume. Mercer has, too. Mercer has, has just, just a whole slew of them. And to separate the difference there, something I've kind of learned in, in the trade of human resources is recency is really important. That some firms have been in business for a number of years and have been doing this for 30, 40 years. But you really need to look at recency in terms of being updated, in terms of technology that they would use. And when I looked at Mercer, who was very close to Slavin, Mercer didn't have as much recency in terms of being actively recruiting, whereas Slavin had, you know, currently two or three going on now in 2011, plus a lot in 2010, and they had the 200. So when they're this close, I start looking at different types of parameters, and it is a very difficult discussion or decision. With respect to Waters, I think the thing that concerned me there is, by looking at my notes, assigning a project manager and kind of offering that responsibility, we should be paying, that should be included. They did talk about team building and, and performance management, which makes sense because when you look at their resumes, that's what their skill sets are. I would prefer to have a skill set of someone that has sat in that seat, i.e. a, a, a previous town manager. Just going down to, which one do I have in front of me here? Slavin in terms of pros and cons. One of the pros, I thought, was cost. It was not that, that this is going to be decided on cost, but I think the cost was reasonable. They had a primary consultant and a co-consultant. I think the fact that they're in Mesa is huge. I, I think that having someone local is really important as it relates, relates to cost specifically. They really seem to zero in on this public-private components that was in our RFP. You know, we've talked about running public sessions on Saturday. We've talked about developing profile. They specifically talked about involving stakeholders in profile. And my interpretation is that is not only they will, will they talk with council members, they will also talk with staff, and they will also talk to other leaders in the community to get their profile, which I thought was a, a real strength. ICMA certifications, I think, is extremely important. And they seem to have that above the others. And something in here that when I first read it, didn't strike me, that when I went back and read it again, it did strike me. They said, "We, we recruit happily employed," which I think is really important. Because what often happens with these recruitment firms is they, they look at who's on the market. That may be looking for a job because they're unhappy with where they're at, so forth and so on. But recruiting happily employed basically means that they have the technology perhaps, and hopefully, and we need to find this out, the network to talk to those people that are perhaps doing a superior job someplace else that are willing to look for a move. So that, to me, really distinguished them from other folks that were talking more about other types of network. But it is, it is a very difficult decision, and Slavin and Mercer were, were at the top of my list. The only downside I had for this particular group is I wasn't thoroughly impressed with their, their brochure. And, and the folks that have the best brochure seem to be lacking in, in other skill sets, and they seem to be more marketing folks rather than HR professionals. So just weighing in on, on that. One other thing, and I'll be brief here, is that there were two things that struck me on their fee, fee proposal. And I'm speaking about Slavin here. That they would negotiate the contract. And we perhaps need to talk about this. I'm not sure it's necessary to have them negotiate a contract for us. We've done that in the past using internal resources and have been successful at coming up with contracts that have been extremely reasonable. The other thing they had on there was conduct site visits, which was actually pretty hefty at $3,200. And I'm not sure if they'd be willing to unbundle that. That basically means that they would go to the community and check it out. Now, I, I think it may be more valuable to have someone here maybe make that trip and, and check it out. And you could do it probably at half the cost. But I wouldn't just, I wouldn't necessarily unbundle that cost, but I'm saying if you were looking at cost savings, those are two things that I think are somewhat academic, frankly, which would lower the cost significantly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for that. Councilmember Rockey?
Just comparing the two, if we're looking at Mercer and Slavin, the total fee that Slavin is, and they're, and they're both doing a comparable fee. Slavin is a flat fee of $21,700 plus travel for candidates. And then the Mercer Group is $15,000 plus $5,000 cap on travel expenses for their execs. And please, Joan, if you're, if, if I'm misstating something here, please let me know. So that's about $20,000. So we've got $20,000 on Mercer, $21,700 on Slavin. And then, of course, we pay the costs for the candidates to travel. I certainly would be happy with either one. Again, I think they're all drawn from very similar pools. The only thing that, as far as Slavin that stood out, and this is kind of what we're, Joan and I were talking about earlier. Slavin, do you know how long they've been in business, Joan?
I have it here. 1991.
Okay. What they indicated in their, in their proposal is they, they've had no contract terminations within the past five years. You know, have they had a contract termination in the past six years? Usually if it's six, 10, 12, you know, so I would suggest that there's probably some contract terminations in there. I know we don't have anything beyond five years. And they also indicate that they had no peer reviews or disciplinary actions within the past three years. So again, does that suggest that beyond three years, that there may have been disciplinary actions, that they're not disclosing and they're just saying for the past three years? So that, those were, I guess, my red flags, as it were, that being in, in business as long as they have, that they're only able to go back five years- as they have, that they're only able to go back five years, no contract terminations, and then three years for no disciplinary actions. So, that was the only thing that I had. So, that's, I mean, if it were up to me between the two, you know, we have, and then we're comparing apples to apples, and as far as cost, we have the opportunity to save $1,700 if we went with the Mercer Group. And again, I'm assuming that they're gonna charge us the full $5,000 for travel expenses. If they don't charge us, then there's a little bit more of a savings. Thank you.
I can, I can state, excuse me, that I did talk to Jim Mercer today to get some clarification on his fees, and he told me that he's currently recruiting for the city of Goodyear for their chief of police and their HR director. And so, he said, because he's doing that right now, he could probably cut some costs in those, not to exceed costs, because he could combine trips if he were recruiting for Fountain Hills.
Thank you.
I just said something very profound.
Yeah, sorry, I'm all watching on video. Councilmember Lejeune.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Joan, and I didn't notice this the first time through Mercer, but I went back, and Councilman Elke is correct, they're capping at 15K plus 5K, which is 20K.
Yeah.
But also, there was an additional, it was hard to come across it, but there was a range for advertising cost, and it was up around 2,500. So, if you add that, you end up with 22,500. And I know we're not gonna split hairs on that and make a decision based on that, but that now puts them at a higher cost than, than others. Slavin, you know, we've read so much of this, and all starts kind of coming like, like an impressionistic painting, you know, it all starts coming together, and then yet you pull the pieces out on it, but Slavin, is it Slavin that was in business with?
Mercer.
With Mercer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the reason I mention that is because there may be more history there than, than is in print here with this company. Now, going back to Mercer, did Mercer have many contracts that were canceled?
He did not list any, no.
Okay, so, I was just thinking that if he's only gone three, five years back, then maybe there's a good history with Mercer, but once again, I'm comfortable with either of them. I think that being local and Slavin seemed to pay more attention to our own RFP and our scope of work, particularly when it came to the public process. And I heard, when we put the RFP together and scoped, that that was important for all of us. And the other thing that I found notable about their proposal is it seemed more customized to our needs than a boilerplate, and the others, even Mercer was more of a boilerplate proposal. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Lejeune, if I may address your comment about the ads for Mercer, I also talked to him about that today, and he said that he has instructed his staff, and they haven't done it yet, to take that out of his proposals. So, any advertising is included in that not to exceed $5,000 cost. The reason they had put in there did not include newspaper ads, and that can be up to $2,500 an ad, was because at one time they were recruitment, they were recruiting for New York City, and they required an ad in the paper, and it cost $10,000. And so, it was, it was above their, you know, they had to eat that, and so they decided to start putting that in their proposals. But he said, "In our case, and in most cases, they waive that, and it's all included in that fee."
Thank you for that clarification. So, at the end of the day, they're both, they're comparable.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dickey.
One of the other things I looked at, and I'm not going to say specifically, but I looked at the cities in Arizona that they have recently helped, so that was something I really looked at too, because if you know anybody from those cities, and you know their town managers, it was kind of a good indication.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question, then, so are we pretty much narrowing it to Slavin or Mercer right now?
No, or we could pull another one out of there.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm just asking.
If I may, I just, I just also wanted to add that I do have Councilmember Brown's evaluations here, he turned those in prior to leaving because he knew he wouldn't be here tonight, so we have input from him. He, his top two were Waters and Mercer.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a motion?
Sure, Councilmember Broke.
Mayor, I would make a motion that the town retain the Mercer Group to assist us in selection, or excuse me, assist us in the selection or appointment of a new town manager.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Further discussion, though, do we need to mention the dollar amount in that, Andrew, or are we good?
No, we'll actually be back with the contract for you next meeting.
Okay.
If it's back and forth between them and us, but then.
Good, thank you. Any other discussion? A motion now to move forward with the Mercer Group in our search. All right, all in favor indicate a saying aye. Aye opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thanks to thank the committee as well, appreciate it. And we had some good choices, so we appreciate that. All right, next item. Item nine, consideration resolution 2011-21, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the town a certain sum to raise the amount estimated to be required to pay the annual budget to provide funds for bond redemptions for the purpose of paying interest upon bond indebtedness for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2012. Julie.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We talked earlier about the town and having a primary property tax, which we do not have a primary property tax, which is used for operations. What we do have is a secondary property tax, and that tax is to repay, repay bonds that the voters approved specifically for the library, museum, and open space. That debt payment is 900, 1 million, I'm sorry, $1,020,000. Last year it was $945,000. So, what that means is it's a levy of 22 cents per 100 of assessed valuation compared to last year, that was about 16 cents, so it's a six cent increase.
Why is it increased?
Mayor, members of council, the increase is due because of the decrease in property valuations and also the slight increase, it's about $75,000 more in the annual debt service payment.
Thanks. Anyone from the public on this item?
Yes, Mayor, Linda Bordeaux.
Welcome, Ms. Bordeaux.
Hi, welcome back, everyone, I hope you had a nice vacation.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions about, and I think you were just about to address it, Ms. Getty. This tax, is this a one-time assessment, the 22 cents is just what you were speaking about, is that the fact that it weighs, so it is gonna be 22 cents for this year, and is that gonna increase in your staccomers, there are cap on how much that could be? The second question I have is what is the total amount of indebtedness that we have that we're servicing with these taxes? What's the interest rate that we're paying for this, and is that subject to the credit rating for the town? I understand right now, I think we're triple A rated, I could be wrong about that, but I think that's what I, what I heard somewhere. Those are my questions there. I am a little confused, when I first walked in, I missed the general speakers I arrived after, and when I came in, Councilmember Lejeune was asking Ms. Getty to clarify that we don't have a property tax. And so, I'm now hearing you say there's a secondary property tax. And I also was saddened to hear a council member denigrate a citizen as a conspiracy theorist, when any reasonable person, such as I consider myself to be, reading the Fountain Hills Times, and I quote, "The levy is estimated to be about 22 cents per 100 of total assessed value on individual property. The tax levy in Fountain Hills is used for paying off voter authorized bonds." That to me sounds like it's a property tax. The council has some budgeting and housekeeping to complete, as it will vote to set the tax levy for any property subject to taxation. I think any reasonable person would think that is a property tax. So, I mean, you guys are kind of killing me tonight. You know, there's rules that say you can't have a spouse that works in the government, yet unless we waive that. But the citizenry has to be held to, this is the law, and if you break it, here's the penalty or a consequence. For what it's worth, I think you're the person who should have the job, you've been the deputy, you know more about it than anybody. I think you should be our interim manager. Unless you've been ensconced in government for decades, well, actually, maybe not even. Councilmember Dickey, who I consider to be a highly intelligent woman, spent several moments inquiring with the town attorney as to the distinction between interim and active. So, you have to forgive a layperson for trying to wade through the where-tos and here-fors and subsections of the legislation and things that are written to try to stand up for what we're trying to stand up for, and that is, you know, reining in our government spending, we have less business, we have less property taxes, that's all we're looking to do. I don't think we're being conspiracy theorists. Who I really blame for the shape that we're in, and it's not just our town, it's the whole country. You know who's really at fault? We the people. I blame myself for not paying attention. We're the ones who are supposed to watch what's going on, and everybody was happy-go-lucky until the market fell. And now, I'm one of the we the people that's want to be watching what's going on, so I'm doing my best to try to understand, it's a difficult learning curve to understand all of that. That's pretty much it. So, since my buzzer went off, I did have one further comment. I grew up in a town that had a volunteer fire department, and I understand we're losing revenue to pay our firemen, and what they did was they had a volunteer fireman's carnival, of course, it was in the summer, it was back east, but they brought in lots of vendors, carnival rides, things like this, and it raised all the money that the fire department needed every year, and I know that we have access to those fields that are behind the elementary school now. I don't know what it costs or anything like that, but it could be a viable way to boost some of the income for the fire department or what have you, I don't know if y'all want to look into that. But, yeah, that's it, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Bordeaux.
Thank you.
I think we'll probably each bring up those same questions about the, the secondary property tax, so thank you. Anybody else on that? On the secondary property tax, a couple of things, or maybe we can answer those questions if you have it, the total debt that the town has.
Mayor, members of council, I don't have it right with me, but I'd be more than happy to provide it to the council to know what our, our total debt is. I want to say it's around 17 million, but don't, don't quote me on that, I'd have to give the exact numbers. As far as what the interest rate is, the interest rate, you know, varies, it's bonds that were sold from 1991 on, so the interest rate varies for all of them. They are, unlike a primary property tax, which is a tax on property that is in perpetuity, this is a property tax that voters approve to buy a specific thing, that when it's paid off like a mortgage, it goes away. So, these bonds are expected to be retired or be finished in 2021. So, that's, that's the difference between a primary property tax, which just goes into the general fund, is used for operations and goes in perpetuity, versus a property tax that's like a mortgage that is sold with voter approval, the bonds are sold, and it pays for specific things.
What were those, if they're, what are the main specific things we paid for to get into debt?
Mayor, members of council, there was four things that the voters approved. The first thing was some road bonds to pave the roads when we first incorporated, and there's a little bit left of that. The second is for open space, specifically the preserve, and there's a parcel that the town purchased behind the fountain, that we call the postcard view, to preserve that view, and then voters approved to build the library museum. So, those are the four issues that we are still paying for.
And those, that's what totals the 17 million?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, can I back up on that? The 17 million includes bonds that we have, that the municipal property corporation has, and that Eagle Mountain has, which are not part of the town, we approved that payment earlier, those are not part of, but they are included in the 17 million.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, the voters approved certain things that they wanted, and we have to pay a certain amount every year. The fluctuation can either be in rate, the reason, and Julie, please forgive me if I'm wrong, but the, the rate changes because the valuation of the property changes. So, is it possible for the rate to be higher, and yet an individual homeowner could pay the same or slightly even less than what they paid before, even with a rate going up?
Mayor, as members of the council, yes, that's correct. The way the rate works, it's a pay, it's an annual payment, like a mortgage payment, and whatever that payment is, that's the amount of taxes that we need to, to raise to pay that payment. So, if the valuation goes down, the rate could go up, but we're still not gonna get any more than what that annual payment is. If it's a million dollars, that's all we're gonna get. So, if the property valuation goes down, we're still gonna get a million, but the rate's gonna go up, but the rate doesn't, the rate may be higher, but the amount doesn't change.
Thank you. And Mayor, Julie, did, when Councilman Elke and the other members of the budget committee had us pay off this, this building, was that reflected in savings at all in this year's assessment for the interest that we had to pay?
Mayor, members of the council, that bond payment, which is included in the 17 million, is not paid through property tax, that's paid through sales tax. And yes, there will be an annual savings, again, in perpetuity, we will save the annual mortgage payment on that of about $300,000, and that's what helped balance our budget for 1112.
Okay, thanks, I forgot about that.
And again, the reason why the percent went up is because there's less, lower valuations in the housing, so the percentage went up. But the tax, the tax, the amount collected from the property owners in Fountain Hills is really not going up, except for the small difference in the increase in the debt cost, like the interest rate.
Mayor, that's correct. Last year, the debt payment was about 975,000, I think, and this year it's a million and 20,000. On a $300,000 house, the annual payment that they pay every year is about $67. I believe last year it was $65.
Okay, so, but if everybody's property value dropped the same amount, they'd be paying roughly the same they paid last year? Because the overall amount is spread across the entire base.
Correct.
Okay. But the, as far as a percentage, and you kind of answered it, it's a secondary property tax, still a property tax, and you went over in good detail on what we're paying for. The $67 on a $300,000 house is about what percent of the overall property tax for a $300,000 home? What percent roughly goes to the town?
Mayor, members of the council, the total tax levy, including the school and everybody else, is about eight or nine dollars per hundred. We're 16, 16, or 22 cents this year, we were 16 cents. So, it's a very, very small percent of the total.
Okay, so, a little over 2%, it looks like, roughly. So, about 2% of the overall property tax bill goes to the town to pay the debt on the things that we purchased. Okay. That's, a lot of people always assume they pay property tax, it goes to the town, and obviously, the majority goes to the schools and to the sanitary district to provide the functions that they do. Any other questions on, on the resolution 2011-21? We don't have a motion yet, do we? All right. Let's see here. Could I get a motion to approve resolution 2011-21?
Mayor, move to approve resolution 2011-21.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor indicate a saying aye. Aye opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
Thank you very much. Item number 10, consideration resolution 2011-32 regarding intergovernmental agreement with the city of Scottsdale relating to traffic signal maintenance, including emergency services. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Resolution 2011-32 is an IGA with the city of Scottsdale. What this will do is provide us with on-call services for our traffic signals. Right now, we have one full-time employee and one part-time employee. During the budget cycle last year, that one part-time employee announced that he would be retiring shortly after the beginning of this fiscal year, so we did not carry his salary through entire budget for this year. With that said, at the end of this month, we'll be down to one traffic signal technician that is certified to work on the traffic signals and inside the control cabinets. We cannot expect that person to be on-call 365 days a year for emergencies at night and on weekends. The, the employee also has vacation and sick time, so we need to cover that when, when he's out. So, we worked with Ken Kurth, the street superintendent, and I worked with the city of Scottsdale. They have the same, same technology as we've recently upgraded our traffic signal controllers, so they're familiar with our technology, they're able to provide this service, they have, they have the staff to do it. What this, what this is, it's $15,000 a year for on-call services, basically gives us 15 days a month, or two weeks, plus four to six weeks during the weekdays, if our employee is, is off on vacation or sick leave. The written into the IGA is the option for full-time maintenance and full-time on-call service. services if needed. If we have a separation of service from our single, of our only traffic signal technician for any reason, we would be able to get coverage from the city of Scottsdale. The estimated savings right now over the part-time employee could, is roughly anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000, but it does give us the flexibility to have that on-call service and have a backup plan in the event that we're left without any traffic signal technicians. With the reduction of HERF funds, this year, we used, I believe, approximately $130,000 of non-HERF money to fund the street department, just basic operations. Will not have that money next year, so we'll continue, we're continuing to look with municipalities like Scottsdale for other services they can help us provide. So we're continually looking for ways to reduce our costs. So staff recommends approval of the IGA, and the street superintendent and I can answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Paul. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right. We get a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Scottsdale for traffic signal on-call and maintenance services?
Some.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? It was pretty clear, thanks, Paul. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
Thanks. I was going to go to, how much would it cost to get rid of all the signals? I'm just kidding, Paul. All right, item 11, quarterly update by the deputy town manager, interim town manager, Julie Getty, on progress of implementing our council goals for fiscal year 1011.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In your packet is the final report for the last fiscal year on the council goals, but with the mayor's permission, I'd just like to take this opportunity just to go over some of the highlights of some of those goals. I think it's important for the residents to see how their participation with the strategic plan helps guide the council goals that result in programs and benefits to the community. The fiscal year 1011 goals resulted in several accomplishments, such as creation of a citizens' academy that will be held each February where citizens can learn about how their government works. It was very successful, our first one that we had last year. We held the first Freedom Series in partnership with the VFW where two members of our community shared their stories. We increased transparency through the town website where citizens can now go online and look and see where the town is spending their money and who they're spending it with. We instituted the customer loyalty program with local businesses participating, and we held the second Public Safety Day that was coordinated by the Public Safety Advisory Commission, which was also very successful. So we encourage the citizens to go online and read the whole report about all of the accomplishments, but those are just some of the highlights. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Julie on the quarterly report? Excellent. Item 12, council discussion direction, town manager. Nothing there? We have summary follow-up for our next item, if you're ready to go. Did you want to speak on that item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There was one item that was to work with the chamber on naming for Keith McMahon to use in the naming policy, also to revisit the fire inspection fees and bring back to the council at the next meeting or shortly thereafter, the new methodology for January 1, 2012, and also to provide the bonds schedule for the council and any member of the public that would like to have that.
Okay, thanks. And that's actually item 13, summary council request.
Mayor, I think there's a couple more as far as the, we're going to be provided proposals as far as salary for the interim town manager.
Oh, thank you.
As well as explanation as to, or some update as far as how finance department was going to function now as Ms. Getty's the acting town manager.
Good. Thank you, Councilmember Broke. Thanks, Julie. I wanted to mention before we adjourn that I did speak with the former town manager, Rick Davis. He is getting settled in, he is working hard in Utah and says hello, and he's very grateful for his time he was here, and told him thank you very much for your service to our town. And I want to congratulate Julie Getty on being our interim town manager and thank her for being willing to be our interim town manager, and we have a great deal of confidence in you, and we thank you and wish you the best. We're here for you as well, as I'm sure your great staff is also.
Thank you, Mayor. We really couldn't do it without the good staff that we have, so we're very fortunate because we work really well together as a team, and so we're looking forward to just keep moving forward with whatever the council wants us to do.
Yeah, thanks, Julie. And look for motion to adjourn.
Some move.
And a second?
Say.
All in favor? Aye opposed? Thank you. Yeah. No kidding.
I'm bringing it back.